Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get this started. Welcome to the emergency meeting, Lander County Commissioners, Meeting Town Board of Battle Mountain and Austin Board of County Highway Commissioners. All right, we're gonna go ahead.
Can you put the date?
For March 16th, 2020. All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order and then if Art, if you want to lead the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and do a moment of silence. All right, we are trying, yes.
Who do we have on the line?
That's what we're trying to figure out right now, so that's why I wanted to
I have a microphone right there to help you guys.
Figure this out while everyone we have online. So do we have Austin yet?
I think we lost Austin.
We're on.
Oh, you're on, oh, okay.
So we do have Austin.
We have Austin.
So how do you?
Oh, see, that's, I messed up.
So can they hear us?
I'm still, I'm still with you.
Oh, you're still here, Brian?
Yeah, I'm still here, I've just been quiet and been waiting for you guys to start.
Oh, okay, I thought I lost you, so I was gonna try and call you on my phone, so never mind my messages.
And then is this Ted?
No, I've got, I've got Ted and Brandy on line.
Okay, so do we?
Do you wanna just have them?
Yeah, I think we're good.
Okay. Okay, all right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. All right, any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be considered for, okay, combined for consideration by the public, uh, public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. For public comment, non-agendized items only, persons are invited to submit comments in writing or attend or attend and make comments on any non-agendized item at the board meeting, if any. And discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comments may be limited to three minutes per person, person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on the public comments based upon time, place, and matter. Public comment, um, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Is there any public comment? All right. So, we're gonna go ahead with number one. For possible action regarding an emergency closure of the rec center in regard to the closer, closure of the Nevada schools declared by Governor Sisalak because of the, um, COVID-19.
Okay, so I think everybody's pretty well aware that the governor did shut down all the schools for the next three weeks, one of those weeks being the scheduled spring break anyway. But what we've run into here in the county is some community members wanted to drop off kids at the school and in a sense make it the daycare for the day, which all that does is transfer the population from the schools to our rec, to our rec center. So, um, what I'm asking for is that you guys discuss it, and I have, and Ted's on the phone as well, on my line, as well as Brandy, uh, Bengoa, our community health nurse, to discuss the closure of the rec center indefinitely, or at least until things clear up a little bit. We don't want a population at our rec center just move from the schools to the rec center. That potentially has that, that spread, um, to it.
I have a question for, for Brandy.
Brandy?
Can you hear me, Brandy?
Yeah, I'm here.
Could you hear me? Okay. In the rec center, because of the pool, is that a real good environment to grow bacteria and virus?
You know, I'm not really sure about the bacteria being the issue. The DDC's new recommendation as of yesterday is no large gatherings of more than 50 people for the next eight weeks, so the rec center can easily meet that 50-plus. So just following that recommendation alone would be means to just close it.
Ted, did you wanna read what we talked about this morning?
We should probably make a record of the law that we are going by to have this. Uh, I need you to put on the record, uh, the nature of the emergency and why the notice could not be timely given.
Okay.
So, tell me when to start.
Oh, you go ahead, Ted, then I'll get into why we did the emergency notice and so forth.
Okay, under the open meeting laws, NRS 241.020 subsection 3 states, in pertinent part, except in an emergency, written notice of all meetings must be given at least three working days before the meeting. An emergency is defined in NRS 241.020 subsection 11 as emergency means an unforeseen circumstance which requires immediate action and includes, but is not limited to 11B, any impairment of the health and safety of the public. Now, to bolster this, the Nevada Open Meeting Law Manual on page 51 and 52, section 5.08, under emergencies, says a meeting may be scheduled with less than three days' notice if the meeting is limited only to the matter which qualifies as an emergency. Minutes of the meeting should reflect the nature of the emergency and why notice could not be timely given. In all cases, whenever a matter is taken up as an emergency, the Office of the Attorney General recommends that the public body provides as much supplementary notice to the public and the news media as is reasonably possible under the circumstances. Further, all other requirements of the open meeting law must be observed. So we are well within, in my opinion, well, within our comfort zone as far as declaring this an emergency, particularly since the governor of the state of Nevada declared a state of emergency.
Well, and, uh, so I would have to agree that the pool will be inundated with, um, children. And so it's basically, you move them from one area into another, and that's all we're doing. So we're not really, um, trying to prevent anything, we're just moving it to another area. So unfortunately, I hate to do that, but.
Yeah, I do, Kathy, it's, uh, you, we, we're, basically, we've stopped kids going to school just so they're not congregating in an area where can, they can pass the virus to one another. So what would be the difference if they closed that and they go to the rec center? You're still, you're still giving them the, you know, you're bringing them together in a confined space and, and, uh, just increasing the chances of that virus to spread, so it's, I, I agree, I think we should close it.
Brian?
Yes?
Um, could you try maybe holding your phone away from your mouth a little bit further? You're really mumbled. Well, now we.
Is that better?
A little bit, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Perfect. So now we need you to repeat what you said because none of us, sorry, I'm sorry, but none of us could understand you.
Did somebody ask me a question?
Were you the one that was just speaking about, the last one speaking? Or who was the last one speaking on this? Because it's too hard to tell who's talking.
Yeah, I, yeah, I was just saying, I mean, you're, you're, you're not allowing the kids to go to school so they're in a confined space, what, uh, there's such being, uh, virus chance to spread. So why, it wouldn't make sense to keep the rec center open and let us do that because we're not, we're not gaining anything. So I, I, just agreeing, Kathy, I think we should probably, uh, to close it.
I understand what you said.
Basically, is, um, why keep the rec center open if they're closing the schools because of confined space? Is having them all come back into the rec center, you've got the same situation. So it really doesn't make any sense to leave it open and available.
I, I truly agree. I think if, if we feel we're in air, at least we're erring on the side of caution and safety, and that's what we're supposed to be doing is the safety, that's part of, part of our responsibility. So I most certainly agree.
Um, I, I think, I can't really speak for everybody, I'm just gonna say, I think we're pretty much all in agreement that we do need to close it. And I will make that motion. One of the questions would be, for how long? I know the governors closed the schools for, till April 6th, but possibly indefinitely. So do we wanna basically go with the governor's recommendation of how long the schools are closed? So once the school comes back in session, then we can open it up?
I think that.
So we can make our motion, just coinciding with how long the schools are closed, and then we don't have to have particular dates, right?
If, if I may, uh, my recommendation would be to, to, of course, follow what the state is doing, but then again, remember that one of those weeks was already scheduled spring break. So I think we monitor it closely if, at the time.
Uh, I'm Russ Klein, School Superintendent. Just a couple of, of points of, of issue that don't matter, but just clarification. The governor did not close schools. The governor declared, uh, via the state of emergency, if you will. The first week is transitional for teachers to come in and prepare to be able to do online school, and the following two weeks are online school. So there are no school days to be made up. School is basically in session for the following, the next three weeks. That doesn't change the fact that kids will be home and still would go to the rec center. So no issue, uh, uh, in, in complete agreement on that. Uh, our spring break, the, the governor's, the three weeks, the week of transition and then two weeks of instr, of online instruction. We would then, if it were to go this way, come back for a week, the week of March 6th, and then that following week, the week of April 13th, is our spring break.
April 6th, right?
April 6th, we would be in school that week, if indeed we do come back after three weeks. And then the following week, that week of April 13th, is when our spring break is scheduled.
Thank you, we appreciate that clarification.
Keith Westernguard? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear ya.
Hey Keith, what does that mean for, what does that mean for our employees, the rec?
What does that mean for our employees, Commissioner?
At the rec center.
So what, what, what we're gonna have to do is, we do have some maintenance that we can do while it's closed. But, of course, it's not gonna be two weeks' worth of maintenance. So, um, I do have a call into the union to see what their thoughts are on it. I mean, if we have, uh, swimming pool employees off while other employees are working, it could cause, potentially cause some issues. So we're looking at some additional work as far as, um, uh, cleaning the rec center. They do a deep cleaning pretty regular, so that would fit into this, that would only be a few days. We would be looking at some deep cleaning at the rec center, or the civic center as well. After that, um, really not sure what we're gonna do, because we have, because of the union, we do have job descriptions that we do have to follow. So that's something that, um, I will be discussing with, um, Bert and Sean, once we get to that point.
Yeah, so the union con doesn't specify, there's no, nothing in the languages, language that specifies emergency type situations, like with, or something like that?
Uh, if I understood you correctly, Commissioner, it, it does not. And I did speak with the union last night, and the local representative, Phil Herring, he wasn't even sure how to deal with it. He was gonna speak with his supervisor and their legal department this morning, and after the meeting, I will call him and see what he's come up with, and then I will brief the commissioners via email.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So Keith, on that, I was thinking, when you, you know, got ahold of me and us to, to let us know about the meeting, you know, that was one of the things I was curious about. And I know the union plays a big part. I wasn't sure if it was a situation that we could, um, basically, put, put those employees on unemployment for the time period?
Well, I'm not really sure. Like I said, I'd like to get the union's take on it. You know, we have the swimming pool in Austin that we, that can be worked on, we'll just have to transport the employees. We have some, some ideas to, to keep them busy, but it's not gonna be two or possibly three weeks or longer worth of work. So that'll be something that we can discuss a little further in detail. We have that health board meeting Thursday at 1:00, and we can discuss that further. I'll have some more answers from the union. I'll have some time to talk with, uh, Bert and Sean about proj, uh, projects within the realm of their job descriptions.
I guess, um, obviously, I think that if there's maintenance to, to be done, it's a perfect opportunity. But on the other hand, um, I don't wanna be, you know, um, if these, if these people aren't working, I don't want the taxpayers to be, um, paying them for not working. So whatever is decided, I, you know, for the record is, you know, if we don't have anything for them to do and we have to send them home, is we need to figure out how to deal with that, because I don't wanna pay these people. I understand that, you know, they still have their jobs and need the money, but our taxpayers don't need to be paying for them to be sent home either.
Keith, didn't the governor say that teachers would be paid?
Yeah, that, that's actually the, the president down to the governor. There's been some proclamations put in place that, um, and I quote, "pay will not be affected," end quote. So, um, I, I don't know how we can do that without, just sending people home and saying, you know, you gotta use your leave credits or, or, you know, you don't get paid.
Well, I'd like to see an action item on that in the future, in the very near future, as, as quick as possible, so that people know where they stand. I think we need to vote.
Well, I'll make a motion then, because I didn't before, but I'll make a motion that we close the rec center for the duration of, um, Governor Sisalak's recommendations for closure of the school buildings.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Move on to the next one, thank you. For possible action regarding closure of the Battle Mountain and Austin senior centers in regards to the COVID-19.
And once again, Commissioners, this is the same, the, along the same lines. We did have a meeting, um, last week, Thursday, and the senior population is one of the high-target, um, concerns, uh, c, within the country. So I know we don't have a lot of seniors there, or we don't have the over 50, but we still have seniors that come there regularly, they, they depend on the food, or the lunches, and, and just the, uh, the gathering, uh, the socialite, socializing of it. So, um, it's gonna be tough, but I, Sandy's here, and I'm hoping Sandy, I know she had a conference call with the state at 8:30, and I don't know if she can shed any more light on the direction that the state is going.
Sandy, you have to come up, please, and push the button.
I'm Sandy Smith with the Austin and Battle Mountain Senior Programs. In my conference call, they tried to have as many of this state as possible, but it wasn't called till early this morning. Um, what a lot of the counties are doing are going to a drive-by and just deliver, and just having people come by that can pick up their meals. I heard that the Humboldt County Senior Center is gonna close till April 6th. I'm not real sure if that's totally in stone or not, but, um, a lot of people were talking about closures. We, we have some seniors that are really homebound, so we could probably continue with those and not shut down, but I think it would be valuable for us not to have people congregate there, because one, it'll infect the building, is what I'm hearing. I was talking with, um, Brandy Friday, and we were coming up with some ideas and suggestions. Austin, they could fix the meals and do a drive-through too, and just have them pick them up. So, i- it depends on what happens, but I think that for the safety of our seniors, they should not congregate in a closed environment together. If they wanna do it privately, they're all friends anyways. But just so that they're not all in one spot, and then it drifts into the kitchen, because that would be the first thing that would happen.
Sandy, do you have, uh, uh, you do deliveries now, don't you? So you're all set up for the delivery system.
Right, we can increase it if, and do the drive-throughs. But that's what I just heard through the state meeting, the state has no clue what they're doing. I was on a Division of Aging conference call, and they're trying to figure out everything because if they follow the governor's rules, everything shuts down. That means hospice through the state, um, homemaker services, transportation program for, you know, out-of-towners. And so they're not real sure how they're gonna figure it out. What I heard on the phone was they were given two days administrative leave and to think about solutions. So I'm sure we'll be having another phone call, and I can get back with you guys or relay it to Keith.
Well, I wanna thank you for taking the initiative of looking forward and thinking about some things we can do. I think you have a good idea by no congregating and having meals delivered or come and get your meals. I think that's real good. Do you have the, the products that you need to box up the meals and?
We do, because we do have homebound, and luckily, we just got an order in. If you have anybody going to Austin, I can take a load, I can have them take a load down. Anna usually goes once a week. Um, and she was willing, I had a chat with Stas, Stacy, last week, thinking about how we could do this if in case we had somebody that did get infected. In that conference call, a lot of, um, talk about county health officers. We have one here, right? Okay, that's what I thought, a lot of counties do not. So they're trying to get somebody so that county health officers can get together and do like a rule plan for everybody, which I think might be a good idea. Because some, like Eureka doesn't have any, Lander does, I think Ely does, and a lot of the others weren't on the phone just yet.
So, yeah, that will be, that will be discussed Thursday at 1:00.
That's what I figured.
We'll talk about the health board, which is the commission, the sheriff, as well as the, um, uh, health officer.
Yeah, that, that's what they said, that we needed to have one of those. So we're pretty much on track, and Kip did know whether she should come to work at 5:00 or not, and I said, unless I heard from you, come to work. And we're planning the day as usual, but we have the list out, we could call and just say, "Come by and pick up your meals and have them ready." What would you prefer we do?
I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea. If they're able to come and get them, a drive-by like they're doing at the school, I don't think that that's a bad idea, um, because they're not congregating and you're just basically handing them their meal, because I know for a fact, like, you know, there's times, time I hang out there, there's those people, some of those people really depend on those meals, that lunch, um, is their basic, big meal for the day. So I think that if we're able to, um, do drive-bys on the ones that need it.
And anybody that's not able to come in, we can deliver. I was lucky to be able to find, um, another box of, what is it, N95 masks. So I'm picking those up on my way home, uh, way back to the center. And that way, we can prepare our delivery gal, because that's the last person we want to get sick. And it was recommended, maybe, just calling and letting them know that we've put your, your meal on the porch and come out and get it, so that they do not go into the house. So that's another option, we'll have a real quick, uh, staff meeting before we deliver.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, uh, close the senior center for gathering, but that meals will be delivered or picked up, both senior centers. And if you need any more supplies, please let Keith know right away.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I just wanna say, Sandy, I, you know, definitely what Art said, we appreciate everything that you've done and are doing, and you did answer. I was curious how you were going to, um, let everybody know, but you're calling them, so that's.
Yeah, we have, um, we have a call log that, and I think everybody at least has a cell number, so we can do that to get them in, and if not, we can just deliver it for today. Because I know a couple of agencies were saying that they couldn't get anything done that quick.
Sorry, that was Brian, we lost him on the.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Yeah, Patty seconded and we voted, so.
Yeah, I, and I'm in favor of that as well.
All right, very good.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, okay, we're gonna move on to number three. For possible action regarding closure of the Battle Mountain Civic Center in regards to COVID-19.
Okay, Commissioners, this is also, once again, along the same lines as everything else. We have the civic center, as well as the library is in that building, as well as the, um, uh, chamber, thank you, as well as the chamber. So those are the considerations, um, that we need to take. Uh, I know Rita was, is not in today, or she couldn't make it in, she had a doctor's appointment, but she sent a representative to speak. They do have some gathering, some, um, functions going on there in the, in the near future.
What, um, has Elko County done as far as their library?
Library was shut.
Did they shut them down too?
I, I don't know for a fact that Elko did.
Yes, they did, they did. I heard it on the radio.
Okay.
94.5. You know, this is another place where people gather, and this COVID-19 could be spread, so. From listening to the last three days, what appears to be happening is the United States is 50 days behind China on, on the event. And a lot of people are saying that China was not forthcoming on the seriousness of this particular flu, and that it has pneumonia spliced with it, and it's viral, it's not, uh, bacteria. So that's what's making it so bad, so, what do you girls have to say?
Felicia, for the record, with the chamber. Um, we actually just had an incident where we had a gentleman that actually came into the civic center and attempted to steal our chemical and products like that. And Rita fortunately was watching the camera and, and was able to stop it, but we get people that come in there all the time that are just not very sanitary, not very following the 20-second rule, I mean, they just don't. And fortunately, we have Nicole who cleans after everybody, but it's, we have a lot of people that come through there, and.
I'm Nicole Delgado with the Civic Center, Battle Mountain Civic Center. And, uh, as of Friday, uh, Rita had advised me to go ahead and, um, hang up and say that we're, that there's no restrooms open to the public, as well as, um, no public visitor center. So we did close our doors and canceled, 4-H did cancel Bingo, and there's other groups that are being advised to cancel their events as well, so. And that'll go until, I guess, however you guys want it.
How many people do you have a day come to the civic center, for, that are out of town, the travelers?
I would say probably five to 10 people a day.
A day?
Yeah, more in the summer, but.
So if we put porta-potties outside, two would be enough?
I'm thinking so.
Okay, because I know that's a consideration with, some people are thinking that what we need to do or what towns need to do is put porta-potties where people would be getting their gas, have people come out and pump it, and they use the porta-potties, trying to figure out every way.
That would probably work, um, us being on I-80 corridor, if they don't gas up or fuel up in Winemuck or Elko, they're not gonna stop here. You know, there's still people traveling through. You know, there's still people traveling through. Um, and that would, that would probably be the best to accommodate them. Instead of them coming in and, and we're limited also on our supplies. Uh, we went to order and back from the company that we get our supplies from, they are out. Out completely, so we're on back order on a lot of our disinfectant sprays and stuff.
That, that's the same with our, um, orders here for our, uh, outside of the civic center for our county buildings. We tried to double and even triple up our orders, um, last week, and we were not able to. We are scheduled to get our regular orders, but we'll see if that actually comes through.
If there's no further comments anybody'd like to make, um, I will make a motion that we do close the civic center for the duration of, um, the closures of the other facilities.
Have a second?
I'll second the motion.
You want to put porta-potties out there for people to stop?
Well, Maverick is pretty close.
Yeah, well, they, they may shut that down too. And put porta-potties out in front of Maverick, that's, that's what, you know, by the time we meet Thursday, we'll know if we need to get that drastic, but these are some of the things that are being discussed.
Okay, I, I will add, um, to request that Keith check into that as far as supplying porta-potties at the civic center.
So, then, second?
I'll, I'll second the amendment.
Alright, very good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, no, no, I'm, I'm aye.
I'm aye, but, but Keith's been.
I just, Keith has something to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I, I just had one clarification, you say the civic center, will that include, that's the entire building, the library, as well as the, um, chamber?
The whole buil- the whole building.
Okay, I just want to be sure, because the library is, you know, we contract with.
The library is shut.
Well, they're open right now, so they haven't got the word yet.
Well, they shouldn't be, because the governor said libraries are to be shut down, so. And I know they're controlled by Elko, but the radio said they're shut down, so.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear, because like I say, they're damn got the word yet, so we'll make sure they get it here shortly, thank you.
We're good, and, and Brian voted aye for the record.
Yeah, Brian, Brian voted aye.
So then, do we have, on this, do we have any public comment?
Leslie Bunch for the record, I got a phone call this morning from two individuals that live here that are in isolation. Um, they were all over town when they may have been affected, we won't know for a while, but I thought I should let you know.
Did they test positive?
They are in that process, and I don't know.
Oh, that takes five days. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, again, if, if people were gonna get sick, there was five of us that went back to Washington DC last week, and I'm, I'm fine. We were, uh, maybe we got the prevailing easterly wind from West Virginia.
Jason Blake for the record from the hospital, and as long as I keep six feet distance, I'm feeling safe from you travelers that went, uh, to Washington. Um, unfortunately, as, as we know, this is upon us, and, uh, some have opined that it's not a matter of, of, of if it's going to come, it's when it's going to come. And so, on a daily basis at the hospital, it's, it's been overwhelming, the mu- the amount of information that comes. And it changes every five minutes. Um, so I just wanted to sit before you just for a second today and give you some reassurances, and also the public some reassurances, that we are managing this as best we can. The information overload is, is tremendous. We're trying to sift through what is good and bad information, and get as much out to you as possible. Um, I know that Brandy, uh, with the county is working really hard to do, to get the information out as well. Um, and so we will continue, the doors will be open at the hospital. Um, but there are some safety precautions that we are having to take. As we've heard, there, there's a, a, a ser- a severe reaction with older, uh, adults. Uh, well, we have a long-term care facility there that is full of older adults. And so, we have put some restrictions on visiting, and we are going to continue. I think today, we're gonna ratchet those restrictions up even a little bit more. Yet, we are still looking for opportunities and going to provide opportunities for communication with family and friends. Um, and so publicly, I just want to say, if you have family or friend that is in the long-term care facility, call us, and let's see if we can set up a phone call or a FaceTime visit, so that, um, we can keep this out of the long-term care, because if it gets in there, uh, we could have results similar to what has happened in that long-term care facility in, in Washington, which is horrible. Um, other things that we're working on, we keep reviewing and revising our operations. Last week, we had a, a meeting with, um, health officers, uh, and, and stakeholders of the community. And, uh, at that point, we kind of put out what our, our operational plan was on how to move patients and how to, to keep us all safe. We continue to review and revise those plans on a daily basis. Um, we have done a couple tests, um, and, uh, each test that we do, we're saying, okay, how could we have done this better, how can we better protect our patients, our staff, so that this is done appropriately. And so we're continuing to work in that direction. As the hospital CEO, I have a few concerns, and these are, um, kind of some priorities of mine. Um, number one is my staff, I've got to keep my staff safe, because if we lose two nurses, two paramedics, one doctor, I mean, small numbers, we're in big, big trouble. Um, and so, it's, it's a big responsibility of mine to have operations in place that protect our staff. And so we are asking people, if you have certain signs and symptoms and you're sick, call before you come in. Call to the clinic, call to the emergency department. Give us a heads up, so that we can talk you through it, and we can be ready, we can meet you at the door, um, and get you guided in the right direction. We see on TV now, a lot of drive-by testing, we may even be able to do some of that stuff where we take care of the patient out in the vehicle. Um, but I need to really take care of my staff. Um, and then, like I said, our patients, we need to make sure this doesn't spread through, through patients, from patient to patient. And so, making sure that our areas are clean is, is critical, and making sure that our, our paths don't cross too close together with sick people. Um, as you've heard, uh, managing supplies is critical. We do have some supplies at the hospital, I'm being kind of selfish, and I'll be very open with that. Um, these supplies are meant for healthcare providers, and we're going to, uh, in our healthcare facility, I'm gonna be kind of selfish there, we only are allocate, given allocations of what our order is. So if we order, say, for example, ten boxes, we might only get one box in our weekly orders. And so we are kind of ratcheting down, making sure that, um, our supplies last as long as we can. We do have access to, um, state supplies, um, through emergency management, so that critical access hospitals can get supplies when we're in dire need. And so we do have some, some backup there. Um, I think that's about it. This isn't a good thing, but I'm gonna, going to remain optimistic, with a smile on my face. Um, and a calm voice, because I think there is still light at the end of this tunnel. We're gonna come through this, and everything's gonna be fine. Um, but we want to be prepared, and we want to exude confidence and comfort from the hospital. And so, uh, with that, I will answer any questions if you have any for me.
Have you, have you considered activating retired, retired employees? Through a hard to fill, if you need to?
At this point, I have not. Um, that is an option and an opportunity for us, um, if this thing goes down that route, yes. And I appreciate that comment.
You know, one doctor, two nurses, two, two.
That's right. They will fill gaps and help us tremendously.
Yeah, okay, that was just an idea.
Thank you, Jason, we sincerely appreciate your comments.
Thank you. And just so that, uh, you all know, we have canceled our health fair that was scheduled for the fourth of April. Uh, we will postpone it, I know that labs, that's the big draw for the health fair. We will get that rescheduled, we'll still have the, the discounted prices and everything, but let's let this thing pass before we bring big groups together, thanks.
Jason, I do have a question for you, sorry, and, and maybe this is for Keith as well. Um, I don't know if it's gonna come up during the meeting on Thursday for the health board, but, um, do you have information out to the public to, besides, you know, limited contact, things like that? I've heard different, different stories, you know, saltwater gargling, um, ways to kind of help mitigate or, or not, um.
We haven't put any of that information out, I can get with our medical staff, we actually have a meeting tomorrow. Um, and we can come up with some home remedy, home things that you can do, that are not pharmaceutical-based, um, that may bring some, some relief to some of the signs and symptoms. Um, and so that's something that we can definitely put out. Um, I received something, uh, a document this morning that we're going to put out onto Facebook. Um, that shows kind of red light, green light, yellow light on what we can do during this time of social distancing. You know, what, what activities we should kind of shy away from, which ones we should be cautious of, and which activities we should go ahead and do. Um, uh, I think we've heard a lot about what we shouldn't do, but uh, I kind of like to think that life still goes on, and we can still go for walks, and we have great nature around here, and we should be out and enjoying, and, and, uh, still live a beautiful life.
And that's great, and that was one, you know, kind of curious if there's any information you can get out to the public about things like that, you know, I mean, your general, um, practices, you know, washing your hands, things like that. But if there's anything else that a person can do at home to, um, not be so susceptible, like I said, I had heard that the gargling would kill the virus.
Okay.
So if there's anything like that.
I will, uh, chat with the medical staff, and if there's some good stuff that we can throw out, we'll throw it out to, to the public, and I'll also converse with Brandy, uh, so that she can get it out on her, um, uh, message lines as well. Very good.
Thank you.
Brandy's been working diligently, um, on a flyer to mail out, on mailings, which will include signs, symptoms, and some, some treatments and, and precautions to take. Um, Brandy, is that close, I, today, tomorrow, when are we gonna put those out, or when will you put those out?
So, we've been working on sending these out to all the residents of Lander County, which has turned out to be really daunting. Um, earliest that they could be out is probably Wednesday. Neela's working on those, she has to print them, put the addresses on, they're like eight pages long. So Wednesday would be the earliest, and she's been working on it for a week. So truly, as a community, we need a better way to get information out there, because this isn't gonna be timely. And as it changes every day, then we're just gonna need to, to be able to put that information out there every day, so. Those mailings should go out this week, but we'll need a better way to communicate with the public.
I'll, I'll share this with you, that's something that I learned from Dr. Wilcourt, uh, not too long ago. After the bird flu, uh, when people died, they tested their blood, and there was no vitamin C in their blood at all, but the season was over, so they couldn't test the vitamin C theory. So it might be a good idea to make sure you get your vitamin C every day, because it will attack your immune system, and if your immune system doesn't have vitamin C, it can't work. So, that was something that I learned.
Thank you, just a comment on that, because she said she was mailing to all the residents of Lander County?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so when that, when that brochure, or that eight and a half, eleven pieces going out, however big it is, if you would, um, if you would email that to our offices, so we can put it out in the public, because our mail takes so long to get there, so that way, at least we have it posted in the proper places.
She would think she was gonna do a mass mailing?
Right, with, even with the mass mailing, but, 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 I mean, mass mailing will get the people that, that don't have access to our, our other areas, but if we put it in our post office boxes and things like that, um, we can get that a lot quicker, so, just so you do that, thank you.
Yeah, well, I'll take care of that. Brandy, can you have Neela email me that, and pa- we'll pass it to the south as well?
Yeah, I'll have her email it, and then to get it to the Austin and Kingston residents, she has to drive it to their post office and drop it off. So it might not take them too long to get it, once it's delivered there.
Thank you.
Um, also, I don't know, does the sheriff's office still have the reverse nine-one-one, where the call, they goes out? This is an idea, just so people know that they're getting this in the mail. The sheriff's office can put out a short, brief message that says, please be checking your mail for these pamphlets that'll be coming out with information. So when they get them, they just don't throw them away like garbage in the mail, because we get so much stuff in the mail. They may not know what that, they're getting. So if the sheriff's office could help participate in just sending out that short little message saying, you know, the Lander County will be sending out this packet, you know, that has to do with this virus, please wa- you know, watch your mail for this. So, you know, that's a little bit of a connection as well. And then if there's anything that is absolutely nine-one-one that needs to go out to the public, they do have the reverse nine-one-one system that they can use. Um, also, to get it out there, calls all the houses, and the cell system, and cell numbers that they have as well. And one of the other questions, this was for Laura, I knew that you were going to be having your, don't you like, um, meeting here in April? Is that something that, is, is that at the end of April, the beginning of April?
I'm glad that you brought that up, because I had a conversation over the weekend, I'm gonna reach out today uh, to some of the other assessors, the conference begins the week of April twentieth, which is just a month away. But with everything going on, it's not so much as, um, maybe we should go ahead and cancel it. It's the facilities that we're utilizing for the banquet, for the meals and things, they may not have supplies to accommodate the gatherings, um, that we're having, so I am gonna reach out today to the president of the association, and recommend that perhaps we go ahead and cancel the spring conference. There's, we have two conferences a year, one in the spring and one in the fall, the fall is in Lovelock, and we may just want to just cancel this when there's nothing super critical that, in my mind anyway, that we couldn't go ahead and cancel it, um, given the circumstances, because who knows if the motels are going to be shutting down, and the restaurants that are going to be supplying, you know, uh, the catering and everything, they may not have the supplies to do it. Because there seems to be a big shortage of supply, of this, in the supply chain in this country, so. A lot can happen in four weeks, but I would hate to get closer to that and then cancel it, like, a few days or a week before, I'd rather kind of be proactive and perhaps, so I'll have an answer on that in a couple of days, you know, at, at the, the meeting. But I'm gonna reach out to some people today, because we had that exact same conversation and thoughts, that maybe we should just go ahead and cancel it, given the circumstances, so.
Thank you, for the record, that was Laura DeVal.
Sorry.
In the very front.
Oh, there we go.
Okay.
I'm Nicole Delgado with the civic center, so, um, do we still physically go to work, just, are we there at the building?
I'll get with you and Rita after the meeting.
Okay.
And we'll have, just, I need to get with you, Rita, Sean, Bert, we need to talk about some things.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, Alicia Price, Battle Mountain Chamber, so, I, I, so can our employee still go in even though it's closed and work in her office?
I would imagine why not.
I.
As long as no personnel comes in, any, I mean, the public?
Yeah, that, that's the, the main focus here, is to limit any.
Interaction?
Interaction with the public, so if there's work to be done, I, I don't see a problem. Brandy, do you see a problem with, with that?
Absolutely not, I think if we just isolate ourselves from the public and keep our social distance at six feet, we should be fine. If you develop any symptoms, or your family has symptoms, then isolate yourselves at home, but up until that point, being at work should be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Brandy.
One more thing, this is Leslie Bunch from the recorder's office. Our DMV, I got a letter this morning from the DMV stating that most of the offices are taken by appointment only. Um, I'm not sure what we're gonna do here, and I know we can't deal with it right now, 'cause you guys set the hours and stuff. But, um, I'm considering if you, when we can talk about it, to maybe do more over, you know, on the computer, 'cause they can do renewals on the computer. Um, as far as titles and that go, I might wanna go that direction too, 'cause what happens when they close the offices in Reno and, uh, Elko and Winemuck, everybody's gonna come here to do it, and I've got an employee that is very risky. And so, um, I'd like to look at maybe ideas from you guys or what you think that we should do for that end of our office, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sadie Sullivan, Lander County Clerk. Just a couple of things, excuse me, Churchill has their senior center, library, museums, and their county pools col- closed. Uh, so we may wanna reach out to the museum. Um, Elko County at ten AM will have their meeting, this is something I think would be, uh, possibly beneficial that we could look at. Uh, the clerk treasurer in Douglas County, um, has talked with, or is gonna work with possibly the finance, and I'm sure it'd be something we'd have to bring before the board, to where they are looking at having the public pay for their payments online through the credit cards, um, which they already have now, but to possibly waive the fees that are being charged for the credit cards for water and sewer, land taxes, maybe even like Leslie said, the, you know, DMV, those type of things to where it's online, um, to where they're not coming in. But for the county's purpose, um, to possibly waive the fees for one or two months. Um, so that's a discussion that they'll be having. Um, also, at the southern end of the state, um, the city of Henderson has closed the city halls for the remainder of the week. The libraries, senior center, recreation facilities, and the athletic events, um, have all been closed. And then also, the secretary of state is staying in close touch with us, um, for all the functions and the elections, um, with us on that. And then also, something that we may want to, um, look into or, or remind everybody the teledoc to where Tim Holland with LP Insurance, that we have that teledoc to where you can go online and be able to do that, um, over the computer. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, the only issue with that is we, that we have a lot of elderly in our community that don't have access to computers and pay cash for stuff. So that's just one of the things, I guess, when the state figures out. Oh, write checks, yes, mm-hmm, and write checks. So, the gov- they'll have to figure that out, you know, on the, as far as waiving fees as we go forward, so. Do we have any other more public comment? State your name, please, for the record.
Ron Unger, Lander County, uh, anything that needs shuttle down to Austin, yeah, like these papers, if you need them there in a hurry, call the sheriff's office and I'll load up and roll it down there, so. And that's, that involves any of this stuff, I can make a shuttle run if we have to. So, we'll get it down there, Patsy, quick, more than five days, just, okay?
If you need me, just reactivate me through search and rescue.
I'll just call you.
I'll be your dog.
Get her done, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Do you have anything?
Just want to remind you all that Wednesday at, we start our budget workshop, so.
I don't know, like, you know, that's a good question, because postponing budget, you have dates that you have to be done by. So unless the governor says, I'm gonna waive things, we still have to toe the mark, I think.
So, are we ready to adjourn?
Uh, did you second, okay, oh, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.